On lands encompassed by Treaties forty-five and a half, sixty-seven, seventy-two, eighty-two, and ninety-three, we reflect on our role as treaty people and the need to live in respect and peace and show respect to the First Peoples who inhabit these lands and waters. Moving on to adoption of the agenda, are there any urgent additions to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, I will call for a mover and a second or that the agenda be approved as presented. Counselor Coburn, Counselor Daye, all in favor. That is carried. Does any member wish to declare a pecuniary interest? Seeing none, you may declare it anytime through the meeting if one should arrive. Announcements, I will turn it over to Counselor Daye to do the reading.
It's okay, I have a...
You go.
A introductory sentence that will make it made. Thank you. This Saturday is National Indigenous Peoples' Day. I look forward to celebrating with solstice and reflecting on Indigenous experiences in Canada by attending a Jeremy Dutcher concert. In preparation for the day and this brief reflection on territorial acknowledgement, I've been learning more about his work in music. Dutcher is from the Tobeké First Nation in New Brunswick and has received two Polaris Primes and a Juno for his remarkable work. Performing in English and Boulassepe, Dutcher in his words, weaves together English and traditional songs and puts them in conversation with each other. Most notably to me, he combines his music with wax cylinder recordings of his ancestors' songs. He works with symphony orchestras and other groups collaboratively exploring colonial narratives on gender and land use. In one interview, Dutcher calls his music a bridge, a bridge between communities. For a bridge to work, it must connect with land on both sides of the water. And as an individual and part of a municipality, this metaphor reminds me that we have to be willing to listen and ready to respond when opportunities for reconciliation present themselves. Of course, we must continue to work towards creating these opportunities as well. I wish you all a reflective, meaningful, and enjoyable National Indigenous Peoples' Day wherever your journey takes you.
Thank you, Counselor Daye. And I have an announcement here as well. I am thrilled to share some exciting news for our community. Thanks to the support of the Ontario Ministry of Sport, Georgian Bluffs has been awarded eight-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand through the Community Sport and Recreation Infrastructure Fund. This investment will support six much-needed projects across the township, including a new playground at the Kemble-Laford Athletic Fields, fencing and leechers for the Shallow Lake Park Baseball Field, upgraded washrooms at the Shallow Lake Community Centre, a new playground at Sarawak Family Park, improvements along the Georgian Bluffs Rail Trail, installation of LED lighting at the Bonney Beach Tennis Courts. With this funding, we're making meaningful investments in the places where our residents gather, play, and connect. From Kemble to Sarawak and from Shallow Lake to Bonney Beach, these projects will enhance the quality of life across our township and reflect our ongoing commitment to healthy, active, and inclusive communities. We are very grateful to the Ministry of Sport for recognizing the importance of local recreation, and we look forward to seeing these improvements come to life for families across Georgian Bluffs. In addition, the longest day of play is taking place this Saturday, June twenty-first, from ten AM to three PM. Join us for a full day of summer fun with live music, games, and inflatables, balloon animals, paddleboard lessons, among other exciting activities. Admission is free, just bring your lawn chair, swimsuit, and towel and sunscreen. Food and refreshments are available on-site. So it sounds like it's going to be a fun day at Sarawak Family Park. Public participation, presentations, any person who wishes to make a presentation to council must register with the clerk at least seven days in advance of the scheduled meeting. To register, you can complete the online delegation form at www georgianbluffs.ca/delegations or call the clerk's office at 519-376-2729, extension six oh one. There are also for delegations on agenda items or for public inquiries, any person who wishes to appear before council regarding an item on the agenda or for a question or inquiry must register with the clerk's office. To register, again, go to the online delegation form at www georgianbluffs.ca/delegations, call the clerk's office at 519-376-2729, extension six oh one, or register in council chambers with the clerk prior to the meeting start time of five PM. And we have nothing for any of those this evening. So moving on to recommendation reports under Community and Environmental Services. The recommendation is that council direct staff to begin the public procurement process via canoe procurement services or tender to obtain pricing on a tractor with the minimum specifications of a hundred-and-five PTO horsepower, six-thousand-kilogram tractor and weights combined, motor lifting capacity of three thousand pounds, and three-point hitch lifting capacity of four thousand pounds, and to obtain pricing on a Cronos Extendo six-ten boom mulcher, an expandable snow pusher, a dual auger side discharge snow blower, and a rotary sweeper, and the council direct staff to retain tractor V two fifty-one and its associated mower and snow blower until which time they are no longer financially viable to maintain. Could I have a mover and a second please? Counselor Daye? Counselor Coburn?
I thought you saw that first, sorry.
Go ahead.
Before we get into discussion, Mayor Carlton, I was wondering if this could be deferred? When this came up a year ago, when all members of council were here, there were some members that are out tonight that were kind of had a lot of questions and concerns about it. And I just think it'd be more of a fulsome discussion if everybody were here at the table to discuss this.
Okay, so motion to defer is on the table. Is there a second or could I, Counselor Coburn? I think I can just go ahead and call the vote, right? Okay, I'll call the vote, all in favor. That is carried. Sorry, Jerry, we're deferring this one. I think we're deferring to the next committee of the whole, which will be July ninth. And at that point, we will have more members of council here. So moving on to corporate services then. The recommendation is that report COR twenty-twenty-five dash oh-two-three be received for information. And this is regarding the implementation of strong mayor powers. Could I have a mover and a second or please? Counselor Coburn, Counselor Winters? I'm looking to everyone for a discussion. Counselor Coburn, go ahead.
I was expecting some kind of presentation, so that's okay. I guess my question is, Mayor Carlton, you've made it clear that you do not wish to retain strong mayor powers as much as you can, you will be delegating. So this was a report from staff. I guess what I'm looking for are official statements to follow whereby you would be delegating whatever strong mayor powers you are wanting to delegate. I looked online and there are municipalities that do those in the form of letters on letterhead and signed by the mayor. I think it's important. I think your wish to not have the strong mayor powers is commendable. My concern is transparency and accountability. So I have had the opportunity recently to look for documents online, and I can tell you for someone who's pretty tech savvy, I was struggling. So three years from now, two years from now, a year from now, if folks want to see that proclamation, it should be easy to find, it should be part of what constitutes that section on our web page, our website, so that everyone knows officially what stance you've taken and that it's easily accessible. I also note that other municipalities have a Q and A section on their web, their first webpage with dropdown menu of answers so that folks can understand better what this means, what can be delegated, what can't, what your intentions are, and so on. I don't believe we have that yet, but I would ask that those two items be taken forward just to round this discussion in.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Anyone else with comments on this?
I think I would share the same comments as Counselor Coburn. I mean, I think in terms of transparency, we're hearing on other media, different municipalities doing it via letter, it's been very public, but it would be nice to see it somewhere, right? This is scary stuff, right? It really is. We're all heading down that path of unknown and trying to figure out why it's where it is, why it's hidden agenda, it's hidden, and we don't know what it is, right? So it is scary stuff.
I agree that it should be a very open and easily accessible document to people, and it would be fantastic to have it in writing. I do see there's the mayoral decision attachment here that maybe is intended to be completed where there's highlighted sections.
So that mayoral decision would be what I would sign for every bylaw that we pass that's going to note that I am not going to come back and say two days later that, no, I don't agree with that bylaw. So that will get passed right after council meeting when we've passed a bylaw, that will be signed by me with a list of the bylaws that have gone through that evening.
And as well, I appreciate your personal response to the situation as well in supporting the rest of council to make a firm stance against strong mayor powers.
I could see that coming a long time ago. That's why I started speaking out against it a long time ago. But I have no problem putting in writing a letter or document that outlines exactly what that's going to be. One of the things that I've had concern about, and I think finally got an answer, I sat in on a session with Learner's LLP that Lynne Dolan from Innisville and Cheryl Gannon from West Lincoln took part in answering questions. And how Lynne handles budget is it cannot be called budget until we get to a specific point. And sorry, Counselor Coburn, I put my back to you when I'm talking. We have to find a process to work through, and what Lynne does is works through that process with all of her council, and then at the last meeting where they've worked on the proposed budget together without calling it a budget, all of council gives direction to her to bring back what they have discussed and the document they have compiled as the budget to go ahead with. And that's what I would like to see us do as well, that that is working with all of council, whereas the way the government has set it up, technically, it's to be my budget that I work on with staff and bring back and present to everybody, but that leaves everybody else on council out of the loop. So I would sooner work through that process. Samantha and I were talking about it earlier, she's going to look up what Lynne has on Innisville's website to do with that so that we can incorporate that into the document going forward. So that will be coming.
So do we need a motion for those couple of things to move forward and a vote, or I just don't want it to get to the loss or direction to staff or whatever?
Carly?
Thank you, Mayor Carlton, to review. Yes, just to respond to a couple of the items that have been brought up, on page eight of the report, there is mention of a strong mayor power webpage being developed. That is a draft, so on the website, when it goes live, it will be available in your mayor and council dropdown. So every decision that is made by the mayor in every direction has to be in writing. So there will not be any possibility of, you know, those types of things not being done without notice. There are notice requirements in the legislation, so at minimum, for some of the powers to be exercised, the mayor would have to exercise that in writing and provide notice to the clerk. And there are other instances where notice must be provided to all of council. The bottom line is that those decisions then have to be made available to the public, and they are subject to the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Now, the only time when some of those things wouldn't become public is if, you know, for example, a strong mayor was exercising something under a protection in that legislation. So the majority of the time, these things are made public, and they will be publicly available on that section of the website. So these are all things that are happening, and that strong mayor decision template that is appended to this report is just an example of what they look like. So that one, as the mayor mentioned, is one that will have to be exercised after every council meeting so that it doesn't slow up any decision-making or planning process and things like that, so that it's clear that that bylaw is not being vetoed, et cetera. So that is more of a routine mayoral direction where the other four powers that are being delegated that are listed here will have to be exercised as a mayoral decision and then posted. So, you know, the power to appoint a CAO being delegated back to council will be done via a written mayoral decision, and same with the organizational structure and the employment powers with any head of division or head of any part of the organizational structure, and the power to establish committees and appoint chairs. So those things that the mayor has intends to delegate out will have to be done via that mayoral decision. And any direction to staff that advances any presidential priority as outlined in the report will have to be done in writing as well. So those are called mayoral directions. So all things will be exercised via writing, and there will be a record of that, and it will be public in most cases, with the exception of where MFO would allow for a disclose for personal reasons, specifically with respect to employment law and those types of things.
So we can expect to see those official documents regarding delegation of powers come back? Is that something, I imagine that's not something council approves, I think that's just the mayor's prerogative, but we will see that it'll be an official document that's signed and dated and part of that webpage that folks can see?
That is correct. They do look very much like bylaws, and they just ensure that that legislative authority is clear within that mayoral decision, so that it is clear under what authority the mayor is exercising that power and exactly what power they are exercising. So they do very much take a formal shape, and as I mentioned, sort of similar to our bylaws, and they will be, there will be a record of all of those mayoral decisions and directions on that webpage.
So our next council meeting is July second. Can we have that directive ready for that meeting so that that comes back? Okay. So we're really just receiving this report for information. Carly and I will work together and have those directives ready on the next council meeting. We wouldn't be presenting them tonight at committee of the whole anyway, so we will have that. And Samantha was going to look in further about the budget and how we do that, so hopefully we can have that included there as well. Counselor Winters?
Conversation, I agree with everything that's been said, I think it's, we're heading in the right direction. But one of the things that when I was reading this report, it was, the mayor's delegating authority back to the CAO. Do we need to look at the delegated authority bylaw? I mean, we're delegating to delegating, are we sure we're, is that something that, I don't want to complicate things, I'm not trying to do that, but it's one of those, one of those things that we do that thinking we're doing a great job, which is what it should be, but is it properly worded?
That's a good question, because our delegation of authority bylaw, how does this impact that, and should this be included there? So that needs to be brought back and brought up to date.
Not for July the second.
Okay. For you, Mayor Carlton, just as these, the powers and all of the information about how they're implemented is unfolding, we are doing an analysis of the policies that are impacted and making any recommended changes if there are impacts. So we're definitely looking at everything to make sure there aren't any contradictions or any updates that would conflict with each other, so.
I like the word contradictions and updates, but loopholes is what I'm looking for too.
Any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, I will call the vote, all in favor. That is carried. Updates from members, so county council. Find my file here. So first off, on July, or June fifth, I was privileged to attend the OPP West Region Awards with Jeff Gattrow, where Jeff and Andy Redman, along with Jake Al, the Own Sound Fire Department, received the OPP admissioners citation for heroic rescue. So it was quite the day with all the awards that were being presented by the OPP, and it was interesting to be there. County council from June second, the medical director commendation awards were presented by the Director of Paramedic Services Kevin McNam and Dr. Mateh to six individuals who were involved in calls that involved multiple people and injuries and were significant events that they took part in. Scott Taylor shared them. Liz Buckden, the county senior planner, has been nominated to the Canadian Institute of Planners to be on the Housing and Healthy Communities Working Group. And county council received a presentation given by Jennifer Chevalier and Dieter Stadneck regarding climate action and sustainable development and the policies that have been implemented around the declared climate emergency. They noted that Canada is already carbon negative because of our forest and land size. They asked that council reconsider the decisions that have been made regarding climate change, and they brought forward two-hundred-and-seventy-four signatures asking for this to be reconsidered. So I don't have a feel of where that's going forward right yet, but they had a significant number of people there arguing that climate change is not a reality, so we'll have to wait and see what else they bring forward on that. And Stephanie Stewart shared a report on the Rural Transit Solutions Fund and the grant funds that were received from the federal government in partnership with Bruce and Dufferin Counties and Smart Transit. This will be used to develop a tri-county transit program. There will be further information coming forward about transit in Gray County and surrounding areas, and the plan is to create a unified plan from the fragmented pieces that are currently in place. So that will be coming forward. And that is all I have. Are there any other boards or committees with reports? Counselor Coburn?
It's not much of a report through you, Mayor Carlton, to the rest of council, but just a quick update on our OPP detachment board. We have met two, three times now. We're working on the legislated requirements, and that includes the relevant policies. Budget is in the process of being approved, and that will come back to councils for review and comment. Jody and Bob Nichol, one of our appointees, and I attended the Ontario Association of Police Service Boards Conference in London a couple of weeks ago, and I think we all found it very informative. We learned a lot about the legislative requirements as well as the best practices of being a board for police services. At this point, our board meetings are monthly, but I anticipate that once we get the base work done, it will probably be less frequent. Going well.
Good, thank you. Counselor Daye? I can provide a brief update from the Gray-Sowell Conservation Foundation meeting, so not the authority board meeting, but some committee coming out of that. Just to officially confirm, the foundation has voted to, amicably voted to dissolve and do so correctly, make sure all the findings are there in order. It just means that their projects, such as the Memorial Forest, will need to be managed alternately or also be closed up nicely. But the Memorial Forest will be, I'm sure, looked after in ways where trees are preserved since they've all been painted in memory of wonderful.
Thank you. And you'll note that I had included in this week's agenda the Multiministerial Energy Working Group, their full agenda. I put that in because there was so much information about the electrical market and the battery energy storage systems and such, and I think a lot of information that we need to keep in mind as we move forward when projects are brought forward for Georgian Bluffs to look at. So that was included strictly for everybody's information. We have no unfinished business, no new business. Does any member wish to provide a notice of motion or notice of discussion? Counselor Coburn?
Thank you, Mayor Carlton. I have three, so bear with me. Just maybe the most briefly, further to our discussion around strong mayor powers, I would like to ask that we have an agenda item added for discussion about changes to our organizational structure. This is something that's come to light most recently with the introduction of the strong mayor powers. I don't want to speak for everyone, but I do wonder if councils haven't been well-informed about how our organizational structures get changed and what influence or decision-making power that councils have over that. I would wager a guess to say that we have a great influence over that because changes to our org structure change our budget, and anything that changes our budget significantly, I believe ought to come back to council for approval. So I wonder if we could add that as an agenda item on our July second council meeting or whenever it would be most appropriate, but sooner rather than later. Just hoping to get a better understanding of who has that official responsibility or ability to change it. So that's the first one. The second one is I have been alerted to several comments on Facebook and social media and have most recently received a number of phone calls from concerned residents about a situation at Bonney Beach and shoreline road allowance use. I do know that our staff are working on measures to sort of contain that situation, but folks are feeling, I think, effused, and there's a lot of anger, to the point where police are now being called. So this feels like, as Yogi Bear would say, déjà vu all over again. So here we go. But what I'm looking for is information on how to access our bylaws that are pertinent to this kind of situation. So I had a resident ask, could I send him the most recent shoreline or road allowance use bylaw, which I believe is dated 2024? And I said, sure, piece of cake, except not. I went online, I managed to get to a webpage that said bylaw is coming soon. With the help of our trustee clerk, she was able to help me access the documents via SharePoint, which seems to have restrictions on it. The municipal act requires that we be transparent and accountable, and we cannot do that unless folks can access our bylaws. Bylaws are not policies, they are laws in fact that we endorse and put Bylaws are not policies, they are laws in fact, that we endorse and put into place by council. And if folks can't access the bylaws, they don't know how they are to comply or what measures they have in terms of recourse if those bylaws are not being followed or folks are in violation. So I have had a conversation with our clerk, who assures me that it's being worked on. But this to me is not something that we can say, you know, we're getting to it. It's part of our website rebuild, just hang on. I think folks need a way to be able to access our bylaws quickly and easily, and this is concerning to me. As a council member, I think we ought to take responsibility for that not being accessible to folks. We're not doing our due diligence here. So I would like that to come back. I think folks need to know what those bylaws are in terms of this situation and how to go about using the bylaws and bylaw enforcement, should it become necessary. So that's number two. Number three, thank you for the great news about the grant for recreational spaces. As a council member who didn't have any input into that grant application, I was wondering if we might be able to see it, the actual application. I imagine that's a matter of public record. It will give us information as to how the funds have been allocated out. We've heard the list of facilities that are going to be refurbished or added to, but I don't know what allotments have been assigned to each. And I think if we're making decisions going forward about what types of equipment, how we want things to look, what's going to be replaced, I would need to know what the apportionments are for that funding. So I would just ask that come back at some point for discussion. That's it.
And thank you. Any questions from staff before, in regards to that?
I will do my best to have both things, all three things on the chair.
Any other? We are now going into closed session. Recommendation that council, the township of Georgian Bluffs, move into closed session at 5:32 PM in the Sarawak Room with the acting C E O, manager of Legislative Services/ Clerk and legal counsel remaining in the room to discuss 12.1 litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, open meeting exemption P of Section 239, subsection 2 of the Municipal Act 2001. Could I have a mover in a secondary place? Councilor Winters, Councilor Day, all in favor. That's carried. We are now in closed session.
Georgian Bluff has a lot of activities to do. It's really nature-driven and it's like the community is very nice, very friendly. And a lot of the locals come here every single day and they think of it as their therapy.
We're the Faruk family. We started farm on the lake and the community, everybody around it, the support structure. The township has actually made us to who we are today. And now that we have this set up, this whole operation is well received by the community. People drive down from far, far away to do camping, glamping with us.
A lot of people come from far away to see the goats and they're really amazed. Sometimes we feed the babies in front of them.
When we think about Georgian Bluffs, it's really the Reiki Forest bathing that comes to my mind. I'm a Reiki master teacher and we were looking to bring our people for a retreat and this property just, you know, popped up. And we realized that behind is a beautiful forest. Every time we are driving up, I feel so relaxed, the air is amazing.
If you're an outdoor enthusiast, there's never-ending things to do. There's the hiking all over through the escarpment. There's the bay, the water, if you're into water sports or sailing. And of course, pickleball is growing fast and it's all over the place right now. So there's lots to do.
What we enjoy the most about Georgian Bluff is having access to the beautiful nature around us, the cultural impact from the First Nations to the local artists.
The trails and so many great things to do and lots of business opportunity here and tourism as well to support our business.
First off, what I love about the area is the scenery. It's absolutely beautiful, like it's right in the name of the municipality, the Bluffs. Another thing too, that I noticed from living through here is all the small communities throughout Georgian Bluffs. They're very unique and they might be very small, but we're very big with heart. Everybody looks out for each other, takes care of each other and just the way locals support locals. So the ability to have a local business and prosper is very apparent here in Georgian Bluffs.
People are more genuine here, people more sincere, they're kind, they know the word please and thank you. It's the way, it's the way life used to be. It's more simpler, you feel like you're part of something.
The township of Georgian Bluffs as a municipality is proud to serve its residents, whether it be looking after infrastructure, looking after our roads, grading our gravel roads, looking after our parks, our trails, our community centers, our ice arena, or providing the services that residents rely on every single day when they come to our township offices. I'm proud to lead a team which is here, serving the residents of Georgian Bluffs every single day.
What we'd like to see Georgian Bluffs going forward is really, you know, more people coming to experience this beautiful energy, this relaxed energy. Because over here in Georgian Bluffs, I can hear the wind, I can hear the trees talking. It's just amazing, really relaxing.
Welcoming more people, yet with the same foundation and principles of community, of respect and of morals.
It would be great for Georgian Bluffs to continue to support, you know, the nature and the beauty that we have here and to keep our area clean and beautiful.
I hope to see more local businesses, more sustainable living and more families just moving up here and living and prospering off their land and their property.
For me and my family, Georgian Bluffs means being close to nature. Having the escarpment to hike and the water of Georgian Bay at our doorstep is something that draws us to being part of this community. The family-friendly neighborhoods, the fact I can connect with my neighbors and see them on the street, say hello, and I know the people I'm seeing each day is something which for me, is something I treasure and my family treasures about being in Georgian Bluffs.
We are Dirk and Alma de Vries and we are coming to you from Dual Acres. This is a beautiful property in Georgian Bluffs that we own and we run horse-drawn sleigh and carriage rides from.
So today we're going to have Dan and Juliette. Dan's a 12-year-old galving and Juliette's a 12-year-old mare.
Come on, Dan.
When people come here, we invite them to come back to our shack and they will go in there and they can get ready to go, get dressed, whatever they need to do, and stay warm till the ride event starts. Then we bring the horses out of this sleigh shed here and they get on and we take them roughly for a 40-minute ride, all through hardwood and softwood bushes. So the whole experience is in woods. We return here. We drop them off here. They can go in and there's a big wood stove in there. They warm up and if they so desire, they could also enjoy a cup of hot chocolate. We build all our own sleighs. And there's a reason for that is sleighs in Ontario came with a width, a stance, the runner width of three feet, and that was designed to work in the bush and whatnot. But a three-foot stance is very tippy when you get people. People are like hauling water. There's always a second motion. And that second motion is the motion that'll tip the sleighs. So I rebuild all the sleighs to a four-foot wide stance and that's very stable. There's no, you cannot, you cannot tip them. Our sleighs are also adaptable to handle wheelchairs, which we discovered early. This, you know, there was that need there that people with disabilities need, that we needed to provide.
We've done lots of charity work. We did Santa sleigh ride here on the farm. That actually helped really for people to be aware that we were here. But we always have a passion, especially for children with special needs. That was one way that we were able to give back to the community. Every year we host a ride here for the Grace program, which is the Georgian Riding Association for challenged equestrians.
Horses and dog sleds are exactly the same. If you want the horse or the dogs to go right, you say gee. If you want them to go left, you say ha. I've done thousands of rides and I never get tired of it because it's, it's the horses that are the enjoyment. And the people are, you know, we have people from all over and there's so many different stories and so many good people out there that you meet.
I hope that when people come to our farm here and enjoy a sleigh or wagon ride through the bush, that they enjoy the bush, the beauty of nature here, and just go away feeling relaxed and rejuvenated.
The welcome package is a tool that was developed by GB Lip's Subcommittee Community.
Okay, council is now back in open session at 5:52. Council went into closed session under open meeting exemption E of section 239 subsection 2 of the Municipal Act 2001. In closed session, council received advice on an ongoing litigation matter and no further action was taken. Council meet again as regularly scheduled on July 2 at 5:00 PM. If there's no further business, I will now call for adjournment of this meeting. Could have a mover in a secondary place. Councilor Coburn, Councilor Day, all in favor. It's Carrie.